May I have your attention, please? Welcome to the Zone Board of June 20th, 2023. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the chairman. Board members, Mr. Franco, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, our clerk, Mrs. Noonan, Director of Inspection Services, Mr. Conlon. If you got a cellphone, if you can please put it on silent or vibrate, not interrupt the meeting, everybody. The phones aren't ringing in here. If you're going to carry on the conversation, if you could step outside, please. First, on the agenda for old business, we have JBC Architect for variance to demolish the existing one-story, single-family home, construct two, three-story townhouses, structures within the ground, level garages, visitor parking spaces on premise 44 Carruth Street. One minute. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up? Mr. Chin, if he could give an oath. If anyone's going to testify tonight, if you don't take an oath, you're not going to testify. So if you're going to take an oath, please stand up and raise your right hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and the matter is out there?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You head the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tan with JCBT Architect, presenting for 44 Carruth Street. My client's proposing to demo existing one-story, single-family within the residential C-zone, 12,491 square feet, a lot, proposing a, excuse me, two buildings of three townhouses, each building, a total of six units. Each unit will have two-car garage, three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, total of three-story, with two outdoor parkings outside, total of 14 parking spaces. Seeking for a minimum lot area, front yard setback, side yard setback, F8R, parking setback for the two outdoor parking spaces, and two buildings on one lot. So these two are the two outdoor parking spaces, right there.
Can we get two guest spaces for the six units?
Yep. And if you have any questions, I can have Mr. Chi Man from Hardy and Ben Engineering to address any site drainage.
I mean, all that stuff's going to be addressed with the city. My question is, it's too big. It's just, it's, to me, it's way too big. I don't have any questions, but it's just so dense. And you have a 30-foot, you got a 30-foot, you have to file with the MBTA, correct?
Yes, it's a licensing for construction activities.
Isn't there something about a 30-foot setback in there, something with the T, for them to give you that?
The rule is, it's not like they are against the project, they have to be, be of safety concerns, how, you know, how do you react to building?
Right, 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 right. Run the tracks, and that big tree is everything down, lots of stuff there. Those are my only questions. I just think it's too big for that lot, but that's, that's me, so I wouldn't be in favor myself. Any other questions on the board?
No.
Comments?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet, either.
You can put on the rest of your presentation. You know how I feel. Is that it?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
Well, is that 2,430, 2,400 square feet, including the two-car garage? With the ground floor just parking garage? I mean, if we have to reduce, we can possibly reduce, cut back slightly a little bit each unit.
There's no parking in that street as there is now. You see, everyone on that street's got the whole street loaded up. So to me, you're just aspirating it, and it's two, two, you got six units, you're going to have more than two friends over with that building, it's just going to be friends over. So to me, it's just, it's just not good for that, that lot. I don't think it's good for the end of lot. I know it's, it's, it's the end of the road, it's kind of looks like it would fit in there, but, and it's a nice lot, but it's just too much. It's side setbacks, it's front setbacks, it's, it's fire, it's just too big for a lot, to me. So I can let the people speak. Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here from the EPW that has to be read into, and I have a letter from Plank.
Marty Aikens from Chung Sang regarding 44 Carruth Street. We have reviewed this middle for the above reference project. Our comments are as follows. Grading and drainage. One, stormwater report conforming to DEP stormwater regulations needs to be submitted. The stormwater report must demonstrate compliance with the 10 stormwater management standards. A pre-development watershed plan and a post-development watershed plan should be included in the report. The plan should indicate whether there are areas outside the limits of the property draining to the site and identify off-site areas draining to the site to establish locations of potential quantities of off-site drainage flow that would need to be collected or site graded provided to manage the additional flows on the site. Two, the applicant should demonstrate that the bottom elevation of the recharge systems is at least two feet above the estimated bedrock level. The minimum depth to the bedrock and/or impermeable layer should be two feet from the bottom of the chamber. Three, the proposed infiltration system violates a setback requirement for the property line and building foundation. Four, it does not look like the proposal catch, the proposed catch basins can have four feet sunk due to the high bedrock level. Five, we recommend the applicant consider alternatives to the proposed trench drain located at the driveway entrance. Trench drains clog easily and can underperform, and grades can perform, can become broken or dislodged, making them difficult to maintain. The proposed trench drain does not include an invert-out elevation. Oh, no, it's gone for a while. Six, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection of the City of Quincy and/or city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Seven, City of Quincy and/or city's designated representative shall observe the construction of the stormwater management system at the following times: upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushed stone insulation, and prior to backfill. The applicant should provide at least 72 hours' notice for said inspections. Water. One, perform water flow tests with the city's water department. Two, is there any sprinkler systems to be installed? Three, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with mains, all abandoned boxes and valves should be removed. Four, the applicant should confirm the appropriate connection tapping sleeve versus anchor key with DPW prior to construction. Sewer. One, the existing pipes and manholes on the street should be inspected with television pre- and post-development order to check the condition of the system. The television report or video clips shall be submitted to our office for assessment. Two, provide invert elevations for the sewer connection. Three, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of sidewalk, all abandoned structures should be removed or filled with dense grade and stone. General. One, we require the existing sidewalk in front of the proposed development to be reconstructed instead of individual patchwork for the utility trenches and driveway entrances. Two, install survey monuments to delineate the property line on public right-of-way. The monument shall be set by professional land surveyor. Three, the existing conditions plan has not been provided. The plan shall be signed and stamped by professional land surveyor. The existing condition plan should include the following at a minimum. A, elevations of site features, top and bottom of curb, ground elevations, et cetera, and contours along with datum used, bearings and distances of property lines. C, utilities with rims inverts. D, labels identifying composition of surface features, landscape areas, pavement, et cetera. E, identify trees with size and abutting residential buildings along the property lines. F, identify zoning district boundary RESB located along the property lines. Four, existing lots parcels should be consolidated into one lot parcel for the development. The consolidation plan shall be recorded in the registry of deeds Norfolk County. All proposed buildings should have house numbers assigned by the engineering division, DPW, before any building permit can be issued. Five, the entire proposed stormwater and sewer system should be cleaned and flushed prior to the final acceptance. Six, submit AutoCAD file for the project before applying for a building permit. The files should be in Mass State Clean Coordinated System and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Seven, upon completion of the project, submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. Eight, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, and finishing grade need to be submitted along with an AutoCAD file. The as-built plans shall be in Mass State Clean Coordinated System. The developer and/or contractor shall contact the design engineer or surveyor prior to the installation of foundations and utilities to allow for the proper inspection and data collection for the as-built plans. Please note the DPW only reviews the grading and utilities design of the project. With the size of the development, we strongly recommend that a peer review consultant hired by the city should be used to carry out a comprehensive site plan review for the development. If further information is required, please advise.
You have the one?
Yeah, yes, sir. Welcome back, Chair.
From the Department of Planning and Community Development, Ray ZBA 22-107, 44 Carruth Street, application for variance. Chairperson Aikens and Director Conlon. The planning department is in receipt of the ZBA's agenda packet for its Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, open public meeting. I would like to call your attention to the new application, ZBA 22-107, seeking variances to construct two, three-unit townhome buildings on 44 Carruth Street. The planning board received the site plan review application in 2019, PB case number 2019-08 for 44 Carruth Street, where the proponent proposed one, four-unit apartment building with eight parking spaces. The application was ultimately withdrawn without prejudice prior to any testimony being provided through the planning board. May 22nd, 2019, application received. June 20th, June 12th, 2019, advertised public hearing. No testimony provided. Planning board accepted request to continue to August 7th meeting. August 1st, 2019, request by proponent to withdraw application. August 7th, 2019, planning board accepts request to withdraw the application without prejudice. A review of the 2019 planning board case file and an initial look at the 2023 ZBA application indicates the proposed stormwater management system needs to be carefully reviewed. Furthermore, the proposed infiltration areas one and two in the ZBA application are located directly adjacent to the MBTA right-of-way within its 30-foot zone of influence. As a result, the proponent will need to file a license application with the MBTA for this project. It is the planning department's opinion that a site plan or review application to the planning board that can utilize independent engineering peer review services to assist the city engineers' office in their view of the proposed stormwater system is required for 44 Carruth Street, ZBA 22-107. Sincerely, James Bassett.
Is there anyone opposed on the side?
I'll help that problem solve. Thank you, thank you, board members. Chuck Phelan, the Ward 5 City Councilor. I'm up here to speak in opposition. Originally, 2019, I was running for office at the time. Kirsten Hughes was the Ward Councilor. At that time, there had been some neighborhood meetings, and they were, it had been cut back to three units, and that's all they were going to put in. So now this is almost doubled. Even the planning, even those before the planning board was down to four units. It's a site, and I've never seen a three-page engineering report once, so good job, Jim. But it's obviously, this, would the neighborhood like to see something go there? Yes, there's been a fire there, the property has not been maintained and taken care of. And so we have some neighbors here, they were here the last time, August was continued. And I just see with all the problems, I can't, I agree, it's just too big. And it doesn't fit on the site from a management point of view, stormwater management, they are supposed to be getting permissions from the MBTA, that's part of their application. I've dealt with you guys and with the planning board on several items right along the MBTA, and they had to wait till they got all the permissions from the T, so I just say, why not them to? But I'm just here to speak in opposition and thank you for your time.
Thank you, council. Is there anyone else opposed on the side? Second call? Oh, I thought you were letting them in.
Thank you, thank you for listening to me.
Name and address.
My name is Floyd Fontaine at 38 Carruth Street, and I'm exactly right next door to 44 Carruth Street. And it was, as I mentioned, there was a fire there a few years ago, and from that point on, there's a lot of activity that's been going on, and they've been trying to sell the house. And we've had a couple of meetings, and some of the concerns I've heard tonight in some of the letters that you've read, and not to be redundant, but I want to talk about the things that were concerning to me at that time. When the neighbors came here, we were all concerned about the traffic situation. It's a side street, and there's not enough room already. There's a dentist at the top of the street who has an excellent business, but there's just not enough parking for all the customers. And people have parties, and there's just not enough room. The other concern that I have is that when we had that last meeting, I was concerned about the safety and the insurance liability due to the safety issues that I had. And they have a solid rock in the backyard, and it was my understanding that the architect was not even aware of the solid rock in the backyard. I asked them at that time, where is the MBTA? They are in Abutter to 44 Carruth Street, and I was told at the time that they did not need to be there. I find that very concerning. The other concern that I have is due to how close the property is to the MBTA, and the problem with the MBTA having with safety concerns. I was concerned about the insurance liability. I asked them at that time, what type of insurance liability this developer needs to carry? Because if something were to happen, there would be an awful lot of expense that has to be paid out. And I don't believe people should have to wait in line to be paid for accident that should already be foreseen. It's a very, very safety concern. And I am right next door to that house. When they had the fire, the fire trucks were on our lawn, and the fire, the hook and ladder went over my wife's car, that's how close we are. So I am concerned not only for our house and the people in the neighborhood, but also for the people on the MBTA. When I asked them what type of insurance liability they need to carry, the answer that I got was, sue us. That is not the answer that I would expect from anyone. I think things need to be set up ahead of time. In the event that something were to happen, people are fully covered, and they don't have to wait in line for something that shouldn't have happened in the first place. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else? Last call? Opposed or undecided?
I'm undecided. I just have a quick question. I missed something. I'm John Roderfeld, 62 Grand Mall Road. How high was this, the building height?
Less than 35 feet.
And, and from what you were saying, does this have to go to planning, or does this get a waiver from planning?
No, no. They went to planning for four units, they withdrew, now they're here for six.
But does it then have to go back to planning? So, okay, okay, that's what I was just wondering, because usually when you read all that stuff...
They'll review, they'll review.
Right, right, but they, okay, so, and it's business C?
RESC.
RES.
RESC. And what was it, like 12,000 square feet? Am I right about, about the lot size?
Yeah, 12,000, something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm undecided on this one. I think I like their next one better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call? Call of power, the hearing closed. What are we going to do with the ledge that is there, anyway? What, what, how are you going to get that out? What's the plan for that?
Oh, there will be some ledge removal, and this is slab-on-grade, basic grade. We try to pick up the site to avoid, you know, any...
That ledge has to come out for you to build those with garages and lots.
Yes, no questions there.
It's got to come out. And how big is the ledge there? It looked pretty big.
There are going to be some ledge removal, probably a hammer.
And whatever, whatever happens here tonight, either way, if it does go forward, I'm going to make sure there's something there for the neighborhood, that every house is pitched in before you go drilling and taking out ledge, and then if anything's wrong, we'll know what happened and how it was caused. That's, that's, that's just my concern, anyone that's living in that neighborhood, that those properties should be taken care of, God forbid, drilling, ledge, or blasting, or whatever.
It won't be a drastic proposed, but we can also typically let rubble move over.
Well, whatever, you're, you're the building, whatever you decide, but the people's houses that I would like filmed, walls...
Yes, if it's something called free grass survey, we can do...
That's all, survey, look at everyone's house. Any cracks were there, learn if there were cracks, then we'll deal with that. Thank you. Anyone have any questions of the building?
No questions.
No questions.
No.
No questions.
Any comments?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I got you first. I have a problem with it because it's less than half the, or that's your climate size, less than half. That's, I have, I have difficulty with that, to put, to put six units on a 12,000 square foot lot. That's a big problem. And all the setbacks except one are required of variance. So you really, really push it to exchange it. I'd have, I'd have a difficult time voting in favor. And peer review is still required or requested, so...
I feel the same way, it's too much for this lot, it's too big, too many variances. I don't think it's a good fit for this neighborhood, often a lot.
Hemel, any comments?
Yeah, just to counter Charlie, you got 12,091, but quite 28,000 square feet, so...
Way too big, and I don't think, really shouldn't be here without the MBTA.
Of course, yeah, yeah. All right, it's not going to pass, so why don't we draw with our prejudice and look at another project to come back? I guess you can tell that the board wants it way small. Or you want to vote? Go for it. Wants to vote on it, or you want it? Hands up.
Well, we're lost.
Okay, another motion, please. What that means is they're withdrawing with our prejudice, they have to change this project drastically to bring it back.
Again.
Again.
File ZBA 22-107, JCBT Architect for variance to demolish the existing one-story, single-family home, and construct two, three-unit townhouse-style structures with ground-level garages and visitor parking spaces on premises number 44 Carruth Street Quincy. The applicant moves to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that's two years, they, they can't bring it back within two years, so it's got to be completely changed. Further on tonight's agenda, ZBA 23-29, JBC Architect for variance, special permit flood plane to add a side addition to the existing single-family home on the premise number 519 Quincy Sure Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Boyd. My name is Jim Clenn, JCBT Architect, and I'm presenting the homeowner for this property. So the sub-property of 519 Quincy Sure Drive, that currently is a one-story, single-family. It's in residential haven, it's only the fifth, it's on a 5,2821 square feet of lot area, located in the corner of Bayfield and Quincy Shore Drive. So the property is mainly surrounded by single-family and some of the multi-families. So the existing building is only approximately 1,240, 40 plus or minus square feet of living space, three-bedroom, one bathroom. So we're proposing to add additional 226 square feet onto the, to the space, to the rear of the dwelling, where we're extending, extending, expanding the existing bedroom, existing kitchen dining area, and then adding a full master bathroom. Also, the existing, the building is, has a crawl space, that's to remain, and the new addition will have a slab-on-grade structure. We're seeking variance for the front yard setback and finding non-conformant lot size in some of the setbacks. There's no increase in number of bedrooms. The lot is also in, within the floodplain zone, so we won't, we had filed with the constipation commission notice, we intend to get the approval on this.
So it, there's a pair of stairs out in the back now, correct?
Correct.
Which you're going to cover up, and that's going to be closed off.
This, this side of the stair will be covered up and won't be...
Right, over six feet from there.
Correct.
Where does the exit out the back? There isn't any more? All right, look, I didn't see anything coming out of the bathroom. It's all up the front, right?
I'm sorry, there won't be...
I mean, I'm looking, I'm saying, there's no way to get out of this house from the back of the house.
Correct.
So you are going to add that back, which is bringing it closer again to the lot line, is that correct?
That's correct, but typically set of stairs for me and the beagles were not counted to a setback.
So we're bringing that another four feet?
Three and a half.
Three and a half. So what does that bring us down now? What was it, 5.8 or something? Did I read that right?
5.6.
5.6. So, so you're talking like two feet, you're talking two feet from there?
Two feet.
Huh? I mean, it, it'll make the house a lot better than the way it sits right now. It's going to stay a single-family home, of course, correct?
That's correct.
And if people just want to update, I kind of get that, but, and that's, that's a tough room right there, and you got a tough lot, you really have a tough lot, no questions. Those are the questions I had, I'm looking at, looking at, I'm saying, I'm missing something here. How do you get out of the house?
That's why I missed it, sorry.
That's all right. Any questions, the applicant?
I have a question. Come on, sir.
I'm good for now. Thanks, you can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call?
I promised on the first one that I, I liked this, so, didn't see it, but I see it now, and it's beautiful. 62 Grand Mall Road, John Roderfeld. This is good, this is a small little addition, it looks like it will make them a nice house. My cottage in onset has no back door, so you only need two doors to get out of a place, they don't necessarily have to be in the front and back, so...
So you'd think if something happens, you want your family out, not climbing through a window.
Exactly, exactly, so maybe they should put in some big windows in the back in case they could have...
No, they got stairs, he said they're putting stairs in, they are putting stairs in the back, it was missed on the plan. You've got to draw them in, so we're going another three-foot closer.
I'm sure Mr. Conlon will make sure that it's designed properly, thank you.
He will make sure.
Have a good day, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call of power, the hearing closed. I got a letter here from EPW, they reviewed the above referenced case and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided?
Yes, sir.
Please step forward, name and address for the record, please.
Karen Longquist, IDA Apleton Street. I was on the corner from this property. The front of, I'm sure you've seen this property, the front of it is at sea level, the back of it is below sea level. We have a significant problem with flooding in our neighborhood. I have appeared before you many times in the past to discuss this. Every square foot of permeable land that we take away only exacerbates the flooding problem. We had an inch of water last Saturday night on... We had an inch of water last Saturday night on Bayfield Road because of the torrential rain. The description of this is the people bought a small house on a small lot. That's right, they bought a small house on a small lot. The rest of us have to live with our houses on our lots. Please understand that we all suffer from these decisions. Every single time somebody takes away land, the rest of us feel the results of that. And it really, we have a responsibility to the community. And the zoning, the zoning code is very clear that the floodplain takes precedence over most other of the zoning regulations. This entire property is in the floodplain. It should not be expanded any further than it is. If the buyers are unhappy with what they bought, then they have other options. But please don't make the rest of us suffer.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else opposed around the side? Second call? Third call? Call upon a hearing clause. Can you say you're gonna keep that, that as dirt where you're putting the additions on?
There'll be a slab on grade.
Slab on grade, oh, all right. I thought you were gonna... And I thought, so you have both sides of it. It's all gonna be slab. The two sides, you're having two additions, right? One on one side, one on the other? And bringing it together?
Yeah, well, I mean, we can change it crawl space, you know, if that helps a review.
Well, it does, it does. If you keep the crawl space there, you keep the crawl space underneath that whole thing. Water has water to go. It's still gonna go. It doesn't matter what you put there, a square foot to hold it up, but it's not gonna...
Yeah, we'll make the crawl space to help review those out.
You know what I'm saying? Okay. Anyone, anyone, comments, questions? I mean, if he keeps it that way, water's gonna go where it goes. It's for just the rest of it. It's just gonna be crawl space, it's state crawl space. You're not putting no slabs on it.
Cool.
Cool. With that, the water flow is a water flow from the ocean. It is what it is. And it comes and it goes and it's slow. And anyone that buys those properties pays taxes and they pay for their insurance because of... With that, I would be voting in favor of the small addition on the back. I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor as long as we, the addition and the length of the crawl space.
Yeah.
Can it also submit a plan with the stairs?
Yeah, with the stairs. Yeah, before they offer a permit, right. New pair of stairs in the back. Cover them up.
That's a DEP, anyway, right?
Yep.
And all the conditions, any access, any conditions, anyway, right?
Right. Motion, please.
Case ZBA 23-29, JCBT Architect for variance and special permit floodplain to add a side addition to the existing single-family home on the premises number 519 Quincy Shore Drive Quincy with the conditions that no slabs be constructed, there is no third crawl space, and DEP approval.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so won't. Further on tonight's agenda, ZBA 23-32, Douglas Troyer for special permit to extend the business hours and the operation on premise number 453 Washington. Stand in advance from the record?
Good evening, my name is Doug Troyer. I represent Neon Washington Street Quincy LLC. My office is at 850 Willard Street, One Addict's Place, Quincy, Mass.
You have the floor, tell us what you wanna do.
Thank you. So I represent Neon Washington Street Quincy LLC. Last year, we constructed a neon marketplace at this location. It services about a 5,000 square feet convenience store with gasoline operation as well. We obtained our occupancy permit back in March of 2023 and operations have been up and running since that time. As we kinda got into operations and getting started up, we've noticed a benefit of what we're before you here tonight is a increase of the hours of operation. Currently, the hours in which we have are from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., which are as of right. We are looking for an extension from 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The main, there's multiple purposes for the extension. Obviously, we are a convenience store, gas station, so we are looking to expand our hours of operation to afford additional services to the neighborhood and public area. We have similar businesses around us, which have 7-Elevens located at 495. That's a 24-hour, seven days a week. We have a Dunkin' that's close to us. That's five, that opens up at 5:00 a.m. Jimmy's House of Pizza operates till 2:00 a.m. Fridays and Saturdays. And then the Co-op Bar and Grill, which is not a similar business, but they are open up until 1:00 a.m. We also are finding, the service is, it's not your typical convenience store. It's a convenience store that operates and has fresh food, has a pizza oven, and having the ability to have staff come in and get things going a little bit earlier and also staying a little late to basically clean things up is, we're finding beneficial. But the biggest issue is the deliveries. We have multiple third-party vendors. And giving us additional time opens up the flexibility to come beyond the off-peak hours for scheduling deliveries. I provided a pretty detailed memorandum identifying the factors that I believe we also meet. I'm happy to discuss any of those in detail if you wish. But we are respectfully before you asking an opportunity to provide additional services and expand our hours from 5:00 a.m. to 1:00. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
I personally don't have any questions. I went in there to check out your place probably six months ago or another four months ago. And I was impressed, I was impressed. It was very, very clean, the food was very fresh. And it was hot, very hot.
Yeah, it's a new type of convenience store that's coming into New England. Neon is looking at many, many towns and Quincy is one of the first. And we're very proud of it and hoping that we are a great neighbor and we're hoping to continue to provide great services. This is one of the reasons that we're trying to get a little bit of additional time.
Any questions?
No questions. I'd like to show up.
I don't have gas enough eight cents overnight.
Say it again.
I don't have gas enough eight cents a gallon overnight.
My God, it's like, I didn't realize until I started representing gas stations and convenience stores that you, it's like the, it's like the market. They trade it all day long. I didn't really, it's a commodity. I should've known. It's like, oh, duh. But yeah, it's just the fluctuation of it, so.
O'Brien Wednesday was 3:30, now O'Brien Thursday was 3:40.
I know, it's crazy, right? You can go there and charge your EVs.
Mr. O'Brien, they drop it at two cents a piece. Then it goes up eight more and down two. There you go.
It's crazy.
I don't have any further questions.
Great, thank you for your time.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call upon a hearing clause. They have a letter here from the DPW. They reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed around the side? Please step forward, state your name and address to the record.
Go first.
Patrick Roy, 33 Cherry Street. Not really in opposition, but just wanted to point a clarification. Jimmy's House of Pizza closed up operation two or three months ago.
That is...
That's why.
That is me looking at the internet, trying to find local terms. So thank you for that. Correct. That was my mistake.
That's great, you will.
Big part of the business.
John O'Dorfeld, 62 Ground Wall Road. They did just let Papa, I mean, Kentucky Fried Chicken stay open later to sell nuggets. So we do have many places in Quincy that stay open till 3:00 that you can get a sub from. Couple of supermarkets close at 12:00. I'm gonna give my two cents there. I've actually been to a couple of the other Neons in the other cities. So like five or six of them total. So it's kinda like, they were built as like a super gas station, like high-scale gas station food. When I went to get a coffee there, you know, I got one of the, like, American...
John, John, John.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. I mean, this is important. They had, they had no rail, half and half, or light cream. It was just like...
You can talk to your master, you can talk to your master. It has nothing to do with...
That is 100% necessary. But 100%, I'm in favor of it opening up at 5:00 for deliveries 'cause people who work are gonna get up early. But all I can just tell you that, you know, the police are gonna go there the most between 11:00 and 1:00 a.m. And I love the police. Chief Keenan just retired today.
So you missed, you missed the in favor.
I'm, 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 I'm half in favor. I'm in favor of it opening up early, but I think 11 o'clock, it's kinda good, everyone, 'cause think about it. People from all around the city are gonna come there to get gas. And then the other thing, they aren't the lowest, cheapest price. I mean, when I go home late at night from a meeting, when I'm hairline, I pay extra money at the first per parkway to those people.
Should've got gas before the meet.
I did get gas before the meeting, so. But, you know, I will say this, that the corner looks beautiful. You took a corner that looked terrible and now it looks really good. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll look into the happen now.
Is there anyone else opposed around the side?
Light cream.
Third call? Call upon a hearing clause. I'll tell you, I was impressed. I didn't know what it was gonna be like when I went in. I was impressed. It was really nice, really clean, the people really nice here. And impressed me. It wasn't like going to a 7-Eleven or anything like that. Completely different atmosphere and I was, I was really happy to see, see it going. At first, I didn't know, I'm going, I don't know if this will work. I like it, I like the place, so. And 1:00 is not too late in the city on that strip. You're in Southern Arabia and it's a main drag in when you use it, 3:00, 4:00, 7:00. So I'll be voting in favor at 1:00, 5:00 a.m.
I agree. It's a perfect, perfect business, it's a perfect spot, it's a nice operation. Nothing happened, good happened after midnight, my mother told me. I'll keep listening.
Yeah, and it's a great improvement. That was a nasty look a lot, a lot of years.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor, which will. Otherwise.
Motion, please.
Case ZBA 23-32, Douglas Troyer for special permit to extend the business hours of operation on the premises number 453 Washington Street. Quincy hereby requests the application be approved.
Second, only if they have happen now.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so won't.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. ZBA 23-43, Thomas O'Connor for variance to install an eight-foot fence along the easement line and a six-foot fence along the rear property line on the premise number 68 Ocean Street. Name and address, please, to the record.
Thomas O'Connor, 68 Ocean Avenue, Quincy.
And why don't you tell us exactly what you want to put that eight fence on?
We wanna put that eight fence, eight-foot fence along the easement line. There are overgrown trees that have been there for many years. So we're just looking to clean that up and provide privacy along that area. Our neighbor's shed, I'm sorry, shed, her deck is about eight feet, about a little bit more 'cause we're down below her lot. And so we're just looking to provide privacy on that side, take it along the easement line, and then as it goes towards the front of the house on Ocean, drop it down to six and then take it to the right.
So you're not blocking no one in the back with a six-foot fence? Looking back, no?
No. And the back line, the six-foot fence was there previously for about 50 years.
I have no questions. I just, did you speak to your neighbors?
Yes, we did.
And?
We don't have any complaints, okay.
Yeah, it's not on, not on street front. It's on side, right.
No, it looks like he's dropping the street five down the four.
Yes, yes, sir, yeah.
That's my question. So there's no traffic?
No, no, it goes right down to six to four, yes.
Sure. Very good.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, close. I got a letter here from the DPW, 68 Ocean Street. They reviewed the above referenced case and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call? Second call? Third call, close. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
I'm in favor.
Review the motion, please.
ZBA 23-43, Thomas O'Connor for variance to install an eight-foot fence along the easement line and a six-foot fence along the rear property line on the premises number 68 Ocean Ave Quincy. You hereby move the application be approved.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, opposed, or moved? Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA 23-44, Hunter Gortata for a variance and finding, construct a shed dormer on one side and a set of exterior secondary access stairs on the premises number 139, 141. How would that be?
They want more stairs. I have less stairs.
More stairs.
Good evening, everyone. Christopher Carroll, attorney in Quincy. I'm mostly here tonight to prove that I have more than one client. I'm representing Jim Napstett. He's purchasing this property and I've been working on the purchase part of it. And Jim has an architect, which will probably take on the show tonight. But when I spoke to Jim today, he said to me, "I've never been to a zoning board hearing and I don't know if it's a court proceeding." I only know one judge here, Judge Marty Akins, however. So I said, "Why don't I come, Jim, tonight and make the introductions and they can go from there?" But just my quick review of it, in a nutshell, it's an existing three-family that Jim essentially wants to do some enhancements when he purchases. He's selling another property and way enough, I'm gonna put his whole investment here in Quincy. So he's going to enhance it with a shed dormer and then he's gonna have some egress for public safety. The big thing, knowing that, you know, the board is very concerned about it, I asked him about spaces, parking spaces. And Jim assured me that there's presently two, two per units, a total of six. And if necessary, there could possibly be a curfew to provide a settlement. But with, with that, his architect is here tonight that filed the application. So why don't I turn it over to him? You can speak to Jim and then we'll go from there. With that, you know?
Yep.
Here's my first question. You're in Zone A, correct?
Correct.
And you already have a three-family in Zone A?
Correct.
Now you wanna expand it?
Yes. Right now, there's two units on the second floor? Yes. It's pretty tight.
Well, you know what? Personally, I'm not enlarging a Zone A building into big three units. Personally, I would never do that. You're lucky what you got in Zone A. People in that, in that place have one or two families that they got from years ago. Now to take a Zone A and make it larger, just so you know, I'm, I would never go for that. So with that, speak to these gentlemen. I know it's, I could never increase. And me and Mr. Carroll are good friends. We go way back and I'd do anything for the guy except this. I couldn't.
Yeah.
It's just something I've sat with here for 20 years and I've never done it. I never would. It's just, it's me. Explain to them what you want to do.
Well, right now, there's, there's two units squeezed into that second floor and the attic, which is a generous attic, is unused. So we're just looking to convert the two units into one on that second floor and move one unit to the attic, which there's ample space to do. We're not affecting the roof ridge or appearance of the public perception on the either side. It's on the corner lot of Elmwood and Belmont. Those, those public facades are unaffected. So I don't think we're affecting the character of the neighborhood at all. We're able to provide seven spots on this lot. And the only thing that we really need is an egress stair, which is gonna be at the back, away from the public view and hidden by the existing garage doors there. And on the one side to the neighbor, we would like to do a shed dormer. Again, not, not affecting the roof height at all, just coming out one side.
Again, I'll say, it's, you are affecting the neighborhood. You're making, you're making a residential A building bigger. So it is affecting the neighborhood. It's a detriment, I think, to the neighborhood. But you guys, uh, I'm a no vote already, so you guys can, I'd, I'd put a question in there here. Comments? Questions?
They have two bedrooms on the third floor?
Correct. We're not adding any additional bathrooms or kitchens. But there would be a net increase of two bedrooms overall.
Comments, anyone? Questions?
I think I, eighteen-foot shed dormer. I'd love to have one too, but it's not, it's done. I want to hear from anybody here.
Yep. Comments? They have them?
I have a problem with the, it's a lot like the size of that window, but the size of the dormer is a little large for my liking.
I think, I'm surprised that there's this kind of use in rezay.
Yeah. Well, because they got them years ago and no one did it for the rights. They had the right to do that.
I mean, if the lot was bigger than five thousand square feet, I might consider expansion possibilities. But you're staying within the footprint, but you're expanding out on the third floor, right?
Just on one side with the shed dormer, but that bridge is staying exactly the way it is.
I, I understand. I don't know.
I mean, the property does look like it needs a little help, but it also needs that much help.
Well, I, I go back to the, the zone everywhere we had up at Hospital Hill. And they were able to come to a conclusion up there that satisfied us to, uh, to do the expansion.
But Dallas is a two-family.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Now they have a three-family.
The building size itself up there, we rejected.
Right.
And that was, it was the same situation. It was whatever the side of the house.
But it wasn't. They, they still had two units. They were just increasing the second unit. So there wasn't a whole set of cars now. It's not these people that, all right, until he sells it, we're going to bigger place. It's worth more. It's more bedrooms and it's in zone eight and it's more cars.
But I agree that the biggest thing that we did up there, we discussed the size of what we were bringing.
Oh, yeah. You're right. You're right.
And we did have to take the additional living space off the basement of that.
Yes, right.
But I'm just saying, there's ways around it, but expansion on existing to make bigger what's already big. It's, uh, depends on no fly zone for me, I'm sorry.
Could I make a suggestion in that, in that? I, I have watched enough building hearings to know your opinion and I respect that. Is it something that they could possibly go back to the board and withdraw at this time? They have the ability to, you know, think what might work from what might not work? Because they, Jim is a Quincy resident and he reads.
And I, I get, you know, and, and a woman just made a statement here that a minute ago, you heard. You bought what you bought, what you bought. And, and that's what you bought. And, and you got three units out of it and you're getting two rents plus, plus your own budget. Not a bad gig in zone eight. It just don't happen. And personally, I gotta be out when it comes to that. I just, I don't want that house any bigger than it is. You got a five thousand square foot lot. It's not like you got a twelve thousand square foot lot and you, and you can put parking around and make it, disguise it. It's just, it's, it's five thousand square feet. You know, it's just, to me, it's four out of four, so it could go. If they want to come back to the board, it's up, it's up, you know, if all four agree, you're in. But I couldn't do that. I just, you know, I, I gotta think of the neighborhood and the people there, the, the next buyers. You could be there for two years. Life changes, you sell your house. Get a job on Calphone. I don't know, but anything happens. So, and it's, it's the next group that got three families in there and they all have five cars. They got two kids, two kids. It's just, it's just, we end up with nine cars. I, I just can't do it personally. And, and Mr. Carroll, I think you're a great guy and he's very lucky to have you. There's four votes left. They, they want to go back and shrink it a little bit or do something or come back and see if they can fix some, sorry.
Thank you. So is the proposal to withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah, but they want to know if.
How we would vote?
We could continue.
Oh.
I think Mr. Carroll is saying, can we continue this to maybe come back and, and think about it and come back?
Massage the project.
Yeah, exactly. Cause I, I've, I've seen enough projects where, you know, you, there's been some rethinking. And if anything for just to enhance it, it's, it's kind of run right down. So there might be some triggering of some zoning issues. And believe me, no one in this room, you know, values more what you guys do. So, uh, that way, rather than having a, you know, straight denial and be coming back, who knows, in two years, still alive, you know. But we can do that inside.
Oh, I, I mean, but if it's, never mind, the project is dead anyway. We all know that. So it, I'm giving the opportunity instead of all those people speaking. If they want to come back and we're going to continue it, then I'll let them speak.
Jim, Jim's here tonight with his mother and father.
Right.
He's committed to doing the right thing for the neighborhood.
And, and I get it.
He seems excited about it.
I get it.
So.
Name and address, Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Napstad of the fifty-one Janus Street in Quincy.
Yeah.
I grew up on Canal Street in Quincy all my life. I've seen with the property being such close proximity to Walson Train Station, um, that I have tenants that wouldn't have vehicles potentially.
Probably.
And just wanted for the third floor, if you go into the shed dormer up there, then it wouldn't be a wonderful living space. Just wanted to improve it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to make the neighborhood better and stuff, for people to learn, learn versus, you know, the attic, which was those problems and those. For the exercise.
I get it. I get it. I get it. I know. And, and I get it. I get it. It's just, personally, I can't do that. I just, it's, it's rezay and, and, and single-family homes all around here and they should, they shouldn't have bigger houses on five thousand square foot lot. And you know what you bought.
Right.
And, and I know you probably thought you can increase it, but if, as always, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to throw it up. You know, but you know, so that's the difference for me. So we, again, calling to the size, you know?
The other issue that I have with it is that once we, if we're going to permit and let it go, then guy, the next block over or two blocks over will be right in behind with the same set of plans to do the same thing. And, and, and that's the, that's the problem that we confront, having multiple family dwellings and a single-family residence A zone. That's, that's the biggest issue. I, well, it's not the biggest issue, but it's, it's one of the biggest issues because we, we start, it's like a snowball. But once it starts, it, it just continues in, in that neighborhood. They cherry pick it first, but then next thing you know, you got six guys and they're, uh, six, six company homes and they're trying to do the same thing. And, and it just, it just overwhelms us. We're running to that two or three times since, since I've been here. You know, once that we allow, it's like wildfire. They want everybody to just get some plans and run out there and see what they'll do for us.
And I just think in, in zone eight, when they buy Quincy zone eight, they know we're not going to put a few family beside them or anything else. They're going to have a single residence. This happens to be there, so they get grandfathered in and there's a lot of it. There's how many sheds down in House Neck? Garages are trying, they get two houses on one lot. And then they get my, my buddies home and they get divorced. They split the house. She got a house, he got a house. No deal.
That was a plan all the time.
Probably was. Oh, my God.
So what, what would you think, Jim, you have a, your decision? You, you can, this evening, let them rule or, uh, you know, maybe look at what you have and at least it leaves the door open so that you can, you know, return.
Yeah, just thought you'd give a roll in my favor. It sounds like people negatively, they don't get to come back, so.
For a while, two years, yeah.
Yeah.
So would you withdraw then?
You can come back with a completely different plan.
Okay, in, must be two years.
Yep. Is there anyone here to speak on this? You guys can take a seat. Is there anyone here to speak on this tonight? This issue? No. Okay. So why don't we just make a motion to withdraw it off our hearsay and then think of the way he's got to do it.
ZBA twenty-three dash forty-four Nano Granata for variance and finding to construct a shed dormer on one side and a set of exterior secondary access stairs on the premises numbered one-three-nine dash one-four-one. Elmwood Avenue, Quincy. The applicant moves to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, stand down. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Sorry, who's coming?
No, no, no problem at all. Thank you. Click the same everyone.
He goes, pray.
Yeah. He say. My Chris.
Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA twenty-three forty-five Carlos Sculp, keep, Sculp, Sculp. For a special permit flood plane to demolish the existing building and construct a storage maintenance building on the northern pile of the property and the showroom buildings on the southern pile of the property on the premise number forty, Follett Street. You have to kind of represent those here.
No, you don't. You just pop. You buy it and you get it and move it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not Carlos Sculp. I am Brian Potten with Civil and Environmental Consultants, representing the owner of the project that's in front of you today. Uh, the project's at forty Follett Street in Quincy, uh, the Baypoint Marina property. Uh, the proposal is in front of you. You're asking for a special permit, uh, in, in the flood plain overlay district. The redevelopment includes demolition of an existing nine thousand nine hundred square foot building and the construction of a forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten square foot storage and maintenance building. It's a little building A on the drawing that was submitted in the northern pile of the property and a seven thousand square foot showroom labeled as building B. The project is then in front of the Quincy Conservation Commission. We received an order of conditions for the project. And we also, uh, have received approval, uh, site plan review from the City of Quincy Planning Board, uh, back in May of twenty twenty-three. That's a very brief summary of why we're here tonight.
Right.
Happy to see you. Any questions or concerns?
So the showroom, what's, what's the showroom going to consist of? You know, the maintenance and that, and that. We have the building. What are you going to put in the showroom?
The showroom is, uh, if the property continue to be used as a marina, so it would be a boat showroom.
But new boats?
Correct.
And boat equipment and all that too?
I believe so, yes.
Nice block down there, that's for sure. I really don't have many questions. I look over this whole thing and it's like, you know, it's, it's going to be nice on the side.
It's a losing sixty-two bucks, basically.
Well, we busses away and it's all wide open.
Said they had three old funds, they had two forty-two.
Yeah.
Still providing all of the required amount of parking, so it's right. Yep.
Inside and outside the boats.
Right, right, right.
I was there for dinner.
Right.
So this, just, this is the word.
It's chaos. I don't have any questions. I, I really look at, it's going to be a nice place and it's going to be, make Quincy try. It's a huge lot, that's for sure. And, uh, it'd be nice to have a marina right here. We can get equipment that you need, you don't have to drive all the way around to another town. Any questions?
Buy your own in Quincy.
He's talking Quincy. I, I have not given up.
No questions. No questions.
You can have a seat. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
I'd like to speak.
Well, then why don't you wait till the end and I'll, I'll let you go. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call out, park close. We reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. That was a letter from. Now you can speak. Opposed or undecided? Come on up, sir.
Water bar, neighborhood, um, sixteen Washington Court, thirty-five Hannah Street. As the entrance into the marina.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thirty-five Hannah Street, eighty-sixteen Washington Court, James Meehan.
Okay. You're wrong.
Um, so I'm only here tonight because I did get this notice about the hearing tonight on the work they're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was just kind of curious about the, the fuel tank, the gas and diesel tanks that were installed. Um, I never got any sort of notice or whatnot. Um, so I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, I mean, the city takes care of all that with their permitting and all that. Do you want to elaborate a little bit about?
It was a public, I mean, they want the conservation to follow that. It's a public carrier for that. That's a by right project. They don't need to leave. This technical project needs to be.
So I shouldn't have been noticed, notified about that, the tax going on right there?
No.
No? Okay.
Same, kind of. Yeah, thank you, sir.
I have one question. I don't know if you can answer.
I'll try.
So I know Marine Max does most of their boat deliveries up in Danvers. You can buy them down there and you have to go up to Danvers to pick it up. Is it, I have a perception that they'll be doing their deliveries this area now out of here and what volume? How much do they, it's made their volume, that road, getting there just.
Thanks, man.
Yep. Um, I only can offer as part of the site plan and review, I'm not intimately familiar with their tentative operations, but all those items, including deliveries and traffic in and out of the site, are to be the same as currently there. But I don't know if there's intricacies on different times or things like that. I'm not sure.
I don't know how they get big trucks down that road without taking out three cars every time. You're just like here and here and that.
Yep.
Your high street, please stop.
Well, yeah, you're moving clear out. Well, actually, if they're going to do a big delivery business out of this big thing.
When they're going to do it?
You're right. You're right. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
You're going to have to bring it up by water.
Well, yeah, and take them out by water. They're going to have a lot of trailers sitting in there. All right, so ZBA.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Still good people here. Anyone else opposed or undecided? No, no, no.
Pat McGuarity, thirty-three Cherry Street. My comments aren't strictly germane to this as a zoning issue. But, uh, the, the building that's proposed, particularly the one on the north end, uh, is very desirable as a graffiti board. It's backed up against Mount Street Beach and it's backed up against Follett Street. Those two sides are not visible from the property. Uh, if that building was situated somewhere else, like typically like, say, where the restaurant is. Uh, and I understand why, why they want to put it right where it is. Makes perfect sense. But just as an example, the graffiti goes away. But you put that building on Mount Street Beach, uh, park there and Follett Street. Nobody can see anybody in there doing their little thing. I would like to ask that the building they consider maybe glass for the bottom twenty feet, maybe, uh, cement block and then covering with ivory or something like that, or playing something like abreviate or something to make it undesirable as a location for graffiti. That's.
Some plants, uh, some. Like I almost had a green hair, I agree.
That's, that's, yes. An abreviate would be a tall, but the thing is that something like an abreviate is not something that will be easy to climb. It's just not strong.
No, exactly.
Yeah. But either that or something like ivy.
Something for one.
Roses.
Something, you know, to do to minimize the graffiti there. Because the other, the graffiti is going to turn into one of your eyesore. And I know it's going to be a high-end marina, but those sides are not visible to the people on their boats or the people attending the restaurant. You know, they're only visible to the people at the park.
And live there.
And, and the people who live there and the people at the ball field. All right? Uh, the marina is completely hidden, you know, those two sides.
Right, right.
Thank you.
What could you do about that? I never thought.
That's all. That seems a good, I'm lighting a condition up.
Condition for abreviating there with it. So they got a fine fence and they ain't going anywhere. The fence around the back with that.
Would it be a finish that you could put on the building now or?
Are you saying glass? I mean, put, I guess.
That's pretty big glass on it.
You can take it right off. Big braids will be done. I don't know. I never, I never even thought, I never in the world thought, I'm graffiti. Spying the building. Got to electrocute the fence. Ain't going too far.
I just got to have a chat.
Can try to get in again. A big one.
So Jeff said that, right?
No, I'm not done yet.
Jeff's speaking first, gentlemen?
Think? Yeah, one minute, one minute. Something like that with the big, over fence and abreviating is going up. Anyone else opposed or undecided? John?
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grandwall Road. There was also a proposal to do some out in Squanum. Ton of people came out. There's just not a, for some reason, the people really come out in Squanum. They don't come out in this neighborhood. This thing is massive. This is way too big. This is in a, a flood zone. Okay, so I don't even understand how they're going to, you know, they're basically going to be building and taking away all that area. So just because conservation said that they could do it, doesn't mean that they should take away all that space. And, you know, it's, you know, it shouldn't take away from the atmosphere of going down to the marina, which is one of the nicest places that we have, to go down to the restaurant and stuff. I don't think most people go down there to boat. They go down there to get that baked stuffed lobster. And, you know, I just want all the parking not to be missing and stuff. I, I just think it's massive. You know, I think you tell all the other applicants, go back and go try to find something better. Um, you know, they could make this a little bit smaller. Um, you know, they could make this a little bit smaller. It is massive and what that gentleman said back there, you know, that also made sense too. So when they come back with their new plan with a smaller building, it can have all glass on the first floor and that would be beautiful. But, um, I hate this plan as it is because I love the marina and I love the Baypoint Inn, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. So anyone else, last call?
Hello, my name is Charlene Tinker and I live at Bodyboard Cherry Street, right next to the marina. Um, and I grew up in this area, I'm very familiar with it. The warehouse they are planning to construct on the northern side is that this company's been very vague about their measurements. And before anyone decides on what to be done, I implore all of you to go down to the Four River Field and look at that layer of land and the beautiful mature trees. And they are going to come in there and cut these mature trees down, a lot of them. And then they're going to steam shovel right into their property line and then probably put up a chain link fence with some razor wire. And anyone that comes to the field or lives in the neighborhood is going to hate it. Because now, when the leaves fall, you get the water view and it's lovely. Why should these people have a monopoly on the view? I understand they bought it.
They bought it.
I understand that, but now they're going to make the whole neighborhood ugly. And talk about flood zone. After we had the blizzard, that whole area down there was flooded with giant icebergs for quite a long time, so they're going to have their hands full. Anyway, a lot of people, the neighbors aren't happy about this and I'm coming up to voice their opinion as well. So I'm definitely against this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call?
Chairman, I'm.
Final hearing's closed. Uh, I mean, we can add some stuff like, you know, putting the fence back there and putting some, uh.
We have a treaty on this, though.
Yeah, so whatever they take down, they get, they have to put back. So they're not just going to go, you know, rip apart the whole place and like.
Don't play a game.
Yeah, so it's, it, it's going to be done right. And that's why we have treaties in the city. And they're going to put back whatever they take down in just different ways. And, and they do all the property. It's a beautiful piece of property, but they don't want to be made adults. Uh, and I get it and it's going to have, it's going to be a beautiful marina. It, it is a big, yeah, it's a big place. And, and I think the city needs something just like that. The function and even, even better than what's down there now, it's messed down there now. I'll be wanting favorites, probably.
I'll be favored of this one.
I'm in favor of trying to put some verbiage in there.
For the fence.
Trees, local security regarding potential graffiti, et cetera.
All right.
Aside from that, I'm in favor.
Cameras, of course. I mean, that's all going to be cameras anyway. These are all boats down there, big, big, big decks. They don't want people climbing all around that place.
Water for wheels is about $2 million.
Yeah, isn't it crazy?
Yeah.
Do they need any other, any other permits or approvals after we approve this?
Well, they got to deal with, they get the comments from the DPW, they got to do all that stuff and everything's going to be checked down there.
The city has already approved.
Yeah, and whatever else they go, no, go down and check as they go as the drawings change.
It's all in his business.
Huh?
It's all in his business.
That's true, right?
Yeah.
That's good, yeah.
Anything else they got to do down there?
Nope, we're already, we're already talking free board.
And everything is in place and green, all the stuff they're doing and all that stuff.
D E P is done?
They already gave their recommendations, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, as long as the backend is dressed up, you know, the, like.
The fence.
That point that was made about.
The fence and the graffiti, right.
And that, that might take care of some of the issues on the ball field too.
Right, there'll be trees there again, right?
Have a grain.
A graffiti mitigation plan, I like.
Hey, uh, spoken like a true lawyer.
Like a true lawyer.
Big dogs.
Big dogs. Big dogs said mitigate. Uh, all right, we'll put that in there with it, uh, that they're going to put the fence up and they're going to put all the new trees back, uh, whatever they got to do to make sure that it's all back, the building is covered.
Making an attractive fence.
Very attractive fence, very attractive, big.
Aesthetically, please.
Big. Big, that's all right. Motion, please. Are we all set, gentlemen? Are we needing, anything else?
All set.
Case ZB A 23-45. Carlos P. Sculty for a special permit floodplain to demolish the existing building and construct a storage and maintenance building on the northern part of the property and a showroom building, building on the southern part of the property on the premises numbered 40 Follett Street, Follett Street Quincy, with the conditions that the applicant construct a fence, replace trees being removed with arborvitae to protect and hide the rear of the building and all such security as is necessary to try to mitigate graffiti.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Further on to tonight's business, T R 234. Bautiu for a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premise number eight New Hall Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel. I'm here to present, uh, Sing Sing Yang and Ming Ha. I'm here, apply for the short-term rental license, uh, for the property located at New Hall Street. We have a nine off-street, uh, parking space. And, uh, we will using like, uh, two units for the short-term rental. And we will install a security camera on the parking lot to keep the property, uh, safe.
And what, what, you, you say of cameras for, for the building, the parking? What are the cameras for exactly?
We have, uh, nine, uh, parking space, uh, off-street, uh, parking space. So we're going to install, um, uh, online camera to keep the property, uh, make sure that all the tenant in and out.
One, three, how many cameras?
Uh, three cameras.
Three, okay.
And two, uh, doorbell ring. So we know, um, all the tenant in and out.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, like, a light notice, so we know like, uh, who's in, who's out.
Mm-hmm.
So in case like something like, uh, unusually, so we know lie awake. So that's why we install.
How long have you been renting it out now?
How long, uh, about two years?
Two years? Any incidents at all down there?
What's that mean?
Any incidences at the place? Like people breaking windows, police fighting, anything?
I think once, right?
No.
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 I just, I just present that. He, he's in China and then, uh, that's, uh, um.
Hi, I'm Lisa, hi, everyone.
Hi.
Uh, so there is one time a party happened and I helped with because we're not a law party in the house, we only like, allow people who are coming to for, you know, like a school or work or meeting or just travel, just come here to meet. We only allow those people here. So if local people who are partying, we don't accept the booking. So when we do the, you know, online booking, we have that settings that, uh, we review their reviews. Like, they only have five-star reviews to allow them and they, if they from Ho, we ask them, what's the reason you, you want to book here? Uh, and they, they have to read our booking rules.
Right, right.
So far, it's good. Like, at this beginning, when I opened the listing, so I'm not, just be honest, that time, I would say like, two or three, two years ago, yeah. That's the beginning and then we happened once, I'm really not happy with it, but after that, I learned from that, from the study.
Right.
And right now, it's all good.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good. And we see your, your applications and all, everything's here about your trials and all, sales and all that. Any other questions?
Charlie, you're familiar with this property. So you've approved something here previously.
Yeah, I think we, I think we approved that back building a couple, few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was a garage or a barn or something. We allowed the third unit.
Yep.
Is that your portion, John?
No, you said you're kind of familiar with the property, though, and you know.
Utterly enough.
Anything going on down there or anything?
My, my question, which, what, what portion of the property will be rented, or will?
Read.
Uh, number 10 and number 12.
So the whole thing's going to be short-term rental, all three units?
Um, my client, uh, her, uh, mother and I live on the second floor.
She lives on the second floor?
Yes, so we'll be the first.
And the first floor and the back unit?
Yes.
The back.
Will be short-term rental.
Yes, yes.
Isn't the mother-in-law is by herself on the second floor, it's a big house.
And, uh, and, uh, the ma, um, the father and I live together.
The children? About a dancing room, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
No partying.
Yeah.
You hear a no-partying?
No partying for me, one. No further questions.
Is there anyone to speak in favor? First call?
I'll speak in favor.
Name and address, Jeff Stepfull, this is the microphone up here, we need you, name and address. Take out the microphone.
My name is Shane Gray, I'm at 185 Billings Street, I'm, uh, the owner and we live in one of the units. Um, the owners of this property have been very responsible and I support, um, their, I support their, uh, permitting.
Good, very good. It says a lot, someone hanging in all night. Last case, so speaking favor, John?
Uh, John Rutherford, 62 Grand Mall Road, this is Res B, Greg.
Yeah.
Um, I actually went to court, um, in Norfolk, um, for that Airbnb case, you know, last week that happened in Squanum. And the interesting thing that the judge said is that there is no case law. Neither attorney from either side could produce any case law about whether we can even ban people or not. I would like to say this, you got to give it to people who, um, all the people, I was confused, like, why are all these people coming up? They're coming up because we've sent letters out to everybody and the good people are the people who come up who are responding to those letters. There's a lot of people who are ignoring those letters and there's many people in residential A other than the people in Squanum who are renting, who shouldn't be renting.
Cross the street from.
Um, you know, definitely if you're in Res B, Res C, um, you deserve the rent, that's what those places are about. So I'm definitely in favor of this and, um, I applaud the applicant for coming.
I do too, especially the, uh, the guy, neighbor hanging right in all night, just so you can say how nice they take care of the property, take care of them. Is there anyone else speak in favor? Third call, call our pod, hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DPW, we reviewed the above referenced project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed on the side? First call? Second call, third call? Everything's in order, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
Case S T R 23-4, Bautiu for a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises numbered eight New Hall Street Quincy. Move that the application for a short-term rental be approved.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Motion, John? All in favor?
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good one.